I think we can get started. Thomas, you're here. Polly, you're here. So I think we've got everyone to conduct a discussion and potential, potential resolution around what we heard the last two meetings. So, you know, my thoughts and I, and I did over the weekend develop kind of a view to this. And I put together some of my notes and I kind of wrote a draft resolution just as a blueprint, so to speak. So not going to share that yet. I thought we would do a couple of things. One, take, take everyone's kind of view to what we've heard, maybe a high level summary of what we thought. And then what we'd like to do here as a result of this meeting, because we're not commenting on all the, so, you know, and I'm going to phrase this maybe the, hopefully the right way. The politics of the situation, we know that there's a lot going on, but you know, our job is still to assume that this is going to move forward and that we make the best recommendations and summary of our findings based upon the information that we've reviewed and evaluated over the past two meetings. So that's my take as to what our responsibilities are and what we should deliver for tomorrow's town council meeting. And that's why we're here and trying to get this done in 90 minutes could be somewhat, you know, burdensome, but if we don't, then we don't deliver anything as to our point of view. So, you know, given that, I'd like to see, well, first of all, Polly, is there anything that we need to be aware of from a legal standpoint at this time before we kind of even move to the next step of getting everyone's input?
No, this is your opportunity, this, you've summed it up exactly right. And you're basically going to be giving a recommendation as to the kind of the mass, the presentation that you received regarding the annexation, which will help form the annexation master development agreement if the annexation goes forward.
So, and Thomas, you're here as well. Thank you for joining. I know you had some late things to do as well, probably like all of us do. Any, any comments that you want to provide to the planning commission, either from advice or from a directional standpoint?
No, I think what I would say is that it's, you know, an annexation is, is a, is a bit different than, you know, the review of a, of a, of a posed subdivision, et cetera, that kind of has finite requirements pursuant to code. Right? This is, this is an opportunity to negotiate, to work together, to collaborate, to partner, to, to put a, to put a floor on something, to put a ceiling on something, to really think about what our parameters are, what that box is. And I, I don't know, maybe more simply said, I think that it's an opportunity for, for the community to say, hey, if we annex, this is what we want. What, what, what do we want as a community if we were to annex? And so maybe think of it from a high level and maybe not so much a technical level, a technical level, maybe qualitatively, what is it that we want? Do we want a town center? Do we want additional housing? Do we want open space? So I think I kind of just let the planning commission know. It doesn't have to be overly technical. This can be about what is good planning, what it is we want. So think about it that way. And if you have any questions, I am certainly here from a technical perspective, as is Polly, and we can help walk you through that. But any questions, don't hesitate to reach out and ask. I, I hope this is a bit of a back and forth and we can kind of hone in on what it is that we want.
Hey, thanks, Thomas. Appreciate that and all your work. And so, so it, you know, maybe I'll pass this around the room and say, are there any high level comments from, you know, from where we, where we stood? What we, what information we've gathered, trying to keep again those comments to the, the proposal at hand as opposed to, you know, a lot of other things. But Donna, I see you on my left-hand side of the screen. Do you feel, do you feel comfortable at least to share your feelings and your thoughts about what, what information we've gathered?
Uh, yes. I have, you know, quite a bit I'd like to share. And I'm sure, and this might be reiterated by others, but, you know, I appreciate everything that, you know, Nate has brought to the table, a lot of the information here that, you know, his planning, he's, he's tweaked some things. I like a lot of things about this annexation. I think it's, it's something, you know, to, to build on there and at least a portion of that property is important, I believe, for hideout. Um, it's important for the whole area. It's important also for Park City, you know, with the increased traffic. And we, yeah. But my issue that I have is that, you know, I really, from the heart, cannot say that I like the way it was handled. I believe it should be a regional, regional planning commission. Park City has got to be involved. You know, I, you know, Summit County, Wasatch County, I mean, we got everybody's input on this. You know, I, I just really feel like, you know, you know, we can all benefit. So why is it just hideout? And, you know, there were some issues that I had with some of Nate's comments. He said the school was going to be Park City, you know, and then I received this letter, you know, a half an hour ago from this Park City city manager and that, you know, no discussion was made. I mean, how does he know it's going to be Park City if we don't discuss this and talk to Park City? You know, how are we going to get transit in here if we don't get, it'd be great to have Park City's buses go right through. They pass anyway. You know, I, I would love for this to be, you know, something for hideout. This is great, but you know, we can't really just be selfish about it. It's really got to be for everybody involved, everybody, which is, you know, Park City, Wasatch County, Summit County, you know, it's just, it's the whole region. That's why it's got to be regional, regional planning. You know, and I can't out of my, you know, just my conscious, you know, if I was voting for this right now, I don't think I could vote for it because I just-
With all due respect, Donna, you're supposed to look at this, take the political aspect out of this and look at it as a planning issue.
Okay.
And everything you said refers to the political aspect.
Right, okay. So we're talking about a planning aspect without, without any regard to any, any other politi- and who was speaking? I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't pop up.
It's Tony.
Oh, Tony, okay. Um, you know, and as far as the planning, I think it's important for Park City to have an input on the planning. You know, I think it's great. I think the schools are great. You need to have the schools. We need to have the municipal services like the fire and the, and the police. That is key. We are in need of assisted living in the area. I really like that idea of assisted living. There really isn't a lot of that in, around here and our population is getting older. Which are totally fine. Bike lift is very enticing. I think that's a, a really cool selling point. And, but it's, and then maybe a dog park, all that, the larger play areas. But transportation is also key and I really don't see a lot of the transportation issue being addressed here as far as, you know, getting people to this area if we don't have bus service that we can provide. You know, it's great. I think the rail trail, the trails are fantastic. I really like to see one more open space, not have even such a high density as what's planned. But the other thing is, is the whole EPA issue. I would like to say, I would like to see an independent, I wanted to know who the independent consultant was, because it looks like Brad Cahoon works with Nate, the developer, and I'd like to see somebody independent to address that issue. Liability down the road. I really am concerned about that also. And, you know, they could start digging, they could start building and then maybe even they're finished and then years later they have an issue. And then, again, we talked about this at previous meetings. Who's going to pay for it? Who's going to be liable? And so, you know, we've got to, we've got to discuss that, you know, have indemnity. Ensure the, if I have your ensure environment is covered and would not, and we would not be, environmental issues would be covered and we wouldn't be liable. So that is, I guess, in a nutshell, my feeling about it.
That's a good summary, Donna. I'm not going to comment yet. I'd like to get everybody else's comments in here. One, one thing I will say is on the, on the independent environmental person, that was Doug Bacon. He represented, that was Utah, he's Utah, that's why I brought him on and asked, actually, I asked the EPA to, to attend Robert Parker, who wrote, well, actually, he's the project manager. The writers of the original report in 2018 are, are gone or one retired, so to speak. So we have the current, we have the current project managers, but I thought Doug did a good, call it Utah Department of Environmental Quality job.
Right, but one, one, one thing I want to say, at, at the previous meeting, Nate had said that phase one was completed. Reports are clean. It made it sound like that there were six testing soil, like it sounded like there was testing. And then Doug said it's actually not testing. So they do a, they observe the area, whether they're growing or not. So, you know, I, I, I think there should be testing, testing of soil, physical testing of soil. I mean, and then again, I'm not an EPA expert, but to me, this seems like common sense.
Yeah, I would say none of us are experts in that area. And even when you are an expert sharing with us, that's, that's, you know, there probably are, unless you're an environmental engineer, there's probably not every aspect. It's a 250-page report. I went through it and I had to really call it down to stuff that I tried to, you know, the remedial actions. What needs to be done for the super fund site, you know, and how does that affect our area? But we, you know, so I, I totally get where you're coming from, Donna. So, so Tony, you're, you're on the line here. Can you share your thoughts with, with the group at this point, given what Donna just said, you know, as your, as your feelings?
First, before I do that, Ralph, I just want to share something with Donna. Donna, I've owned In-Hot after seven years and lived in full-time here for over five years. In five years, there's only one time that the councilman who represents us from Wasatch County had decided to show his face. And that was at the original annexation meeting over a year ago, when it was just first discussed, not even talking about this parcel of land. They've never ever come forward to do anything for us and neither has Park City, even though they've been asked numerous times. So as far as it being a collaborative event, collaborative is a two-way street. And there's been no input from either side until this. Okay. And then as, as in regard to the plan, my biggest concern was the EPA and, and with the super fund stuff. And between Nate's guy and the guy from the, from the state, they answered most of my questions with that. My biggest complaint about the whole project is I totally am against him having building any kind of six-pack units in regard to townhomes. I mean, I hate the way the four-pack even looks at shoreline. So I would be against that. I mean, I'm surprised at how much open space there is, which is, I think is a good thing. And, you know, in regard to the way it's gone forward so far, Nate has expressed an interest to work with us to do what we want rather than, as I've experienced here in years past in prior administrations. I'm just building whatever the hell I want and screw everybody else.
Thanks, Tony. Thanks, Tony. Appreciate it. I know, I know you're traveling, so, and it's later your time. So again, double appreciation, I guess. Hey, Bruce, you want to jump in and give us, give us, give us your view on things?
Yeah, sure. I think Donna covered a lot of what I was going to say. I'll just reiterate a couple of the points that I think we have to really focus on. And first and foremost, I think what we're looking at here is a kind of a commercial area with a grocery store, some restaurants, some, some shops, but, but a place for not just hideout, but the region, including down, you know, the, on the north shore of the Jordan L and down to the Mayflower project. Place to go shopping, that's one. I think it helps eliminate traffic. I think traffic is key with all these new units going in. That's something the whole region is very focused on. I know that we don't want to create more traffic going into Park City, going out to Kimball Junction, going down to Heber. This would be a great outlet from a commercial perspective. It won't be huge, but I think it would certainly help alleviate some of that. And then in the same vein, I think one of the things that we're really missing, as, as Donna has pointed out, is a public transportation. How are we going to tie into the regional public transportation? How are we going to create, even within the small commercial zone and whatever residential goes in? How do, how can we tie that together with, with some sort of public transportation? Again, with the goal to really cut down the traffic on 248 and on 40. So those are big things. I think, again, the focus is on commercial. I look at the residential, I had a lot of questions on what the lot sizes were. There are some, looked like some reasonably decent-sized lots in the R3 zones that Nate has put into his plan. But, but I totally agree with Tony. I don't want to see more townhouses. We have a lot of townhouses already in hideout. And, and there's even more in Brown's Canyon and Park's Edge and the retreat at Jordan L. So I'd like to see bigger single-family lots, more single-family lots, a lot less, if any, townhomes. I agree that we, we need to have affordable housing. I think that's a great entrance to that. It should be close to town. I don't like the way it's, the way they've drawn it up, being in the larger development, residential development groups. I think anything that's going to be a condominium, affordable housing, or even if we do submit to some townhouses, I think that should all be kind of around the commercial center and have the hillsides be almost exclusively single-family and, and larger lots than what it appears that Nate has drawn in here, although I don't know what the size of some of those smaller lots are. You know, it's a beautiful area. It's hidden. I think it would make a great area for a park or an amphitheater, someplace where there could be a town gathering spot. I know they've designed in this lift and the plaza around the lift, and I think that's a good start. But more recreation, more gathering spots, that, that would be something I prefer to see. The other thing that I think is in the plan that Nate drew up, but I, it's not explicit, is a town hall. A town hall that would be large enough to accommodate more offices as a town expands, as well as a larger meeting place for meetings like this, when we can hold them in person. But also to be used as, again, another kind of a gathering spot for, for the town, because there isn't really that kind of thing here in hideout at this point. On the environmental, I think I got a lot of questions answered by both Nate and the DEQ fellow. But one of the things Nate said, he's going to have a consultant on hand every time they dig up the earth. I think the woman was Catherine, Kathleen Harris. I'd like to know more about that. And I agree with Donna that it needs to be somebody independent of the developer, somebody that answers to the town, not to the developer, has to be paid by the developer. But I think that's got to be part of our thinking as we go forward. I'd like to see an architectural concept created by us for this town, you know? What should it look like? Should it look like, you know, rustic or modern or, but whatever it is, it should be very thematic so that everything stays the same. I don't want to see fast food or drive-throughs. I think this should be kind of a walking town at best and cafes and specialty shops should be something we would, should try to lure into the area, because I think that will lure people to the, the commercial part of town. I think another key thing is that we got to make sure that the commercial starts at least at the same time as any residential and preferably even beforehand, because the demand is already here in town and the surrounding areas for this, this commercial shopping and restaurant, cafe, whatever we, whatever kinds of shops we put in. Yeah, I think that's kind of at first blush, my thinking.
Thanks, Bruce. Boy, a ton of good comments.
Hey, Ralph, before you go on, can I just say one thing in regard to what Bruce said? Bruce, I agree with you in regard to the transport, to public transportation issue, but I don't think anybody will address that until they know the property is actually going forward. You know, I think he has the same issue in, you know, in regard to getting store, you know, commercial to commit. It's basically, okay, let me know when you got a plan in place and it's approved. You know, the, you, the bus line is not going to say, oh yeah, we can do this route. And they don't even know what the roads are or where they're coming in or out yet. I mean, I agree with you that it definitely needs it. And I think, I mean, considering there's already a bus that goes to Camus, there's no reason they can't go through there and still do its run, you know, as, even if that's the only one. But I don't think they're going to commit to anything until the plan actually is approved and goes forward.
Yeah, thanks, Tony. That makes sense. I'll give you my, my two cents here, kind of as, as, and I, I have to, I'm putting my hat on a little bit, because I've been on a couple of other boards, planning commissions previously in my life. I started with this commission over two years ago. And when we developed the plan for our general plan, sometimes in some states, Mike, they call it a master plan, as I was previously associated with it. And during that period of time, we had the annexation piece, we went out, we did, we certainly did invite, you know, Park City. And, and so some of that politics did not stick with me very well, because I would have expected more participation. I brought up the comment in that initial meeting that we should do regional planning and go out of our way to do that. This is really a regional plan and it never took fruition. Now, two, two wrongs or three wrongs do not make a right. So I'm not going to sit, sit here and say, you know, we should have done something or they should have done something. I don't think that's going to get us anywhere. But I will say that part of the issue, from what I'm seeing, and Park City has not owned up to, is the access, we talked about transfer, transportation, we haven't had good access to Kearns Boulevard throughput. My wife just reminded me today that, you know, it took her an hour to get in and out, you know, five or six miles. So when Park City did have that opportunity last year, they, they did not come through with widening or finding other ways to deal with Kearns. So we're kind of stuck with the situation. And I have to, I have to say, looking at their own planning, which is supposed to be so great, you know, they let, they let all those homes creep into Kearns Boulevard. So you had, you had housing creep into that area when they should have kept enough width, then we probably would have four lanes. So, you know, some of the, some of the errors, and I'm not saying it came under the latest Park City administration, you know, these things compound themselves over years and it gets very political. So my own feeling is both towns have had issues and, and Park City is not 100%, you know, you know, I guess, in the best interest, they're in Park City's interests. But again, not trying to dig into any one thing, we could have done a much better job of transparency, you know, right from the beginning. One of the things that kind of irked me in the beginning, being on the planning board, we were never even told what was going to happen. And I know there were some legal things behind that, but you have to think differently when you want a lot of people to come, you know, together on a situation like this. And that brings me to the current, in the same standpoint, that my daughter and my son-in-law and my grand, four-year-old grandson live in Park's Edge. I own some property in Park City. We own, we're buying our second place in hideout. You know, we're kind, we're kind of wedded to this area. So we do want to do it right. And all of us can take partial blame on some of the things that occurred in the past, the not-too-distant past. And, you know, we have an opportunity to make the change in the future. So what I would like to see out of this meeting is thinking about this in the sense of, if our town council votes tomorrow for, you know, October 12th, but in the near term, they will, they, they need, they, they should have something from us, which gives them a directional viewpoint, not a political viewpoint, but a directional viewpoint based upon the information we've sifted through in the last few meetings, what we've learned, what we think, what we think could be the right plan. And we have a blank slate. So we can go back to Nate and tell him, or, you know, suggest, obviously, it's all recommendations, but we can recommend it, you know, three houses, like they, like the Summit County and Park City zoning has currently, at one house to 120 acres. We could go all the way back to that standpoint. Sky's the limit here. So at least what I've done over the weekend, and I only shared it with two other people independently, only one person on the planning board, the planning commission. And the reason I did that is you can't do, you can't share a lot of information across the planning commission. And Tony, I didn't share it with you because you're traveling. Donna, you're working, so I just, but I'm going to be transparent. I shared it with Bruce. And so I tried to get a read on, you know, something that we could put on paper, call it a resolution, a next step, a point of view. So I thought I would share that with you, at least as the next step, as a starting point, which we can then deliver to the town council, if we feel comfortable. If we, if we have all these reservations, and my number one reservation was environmental. That's why I brought those gentlemen from the Department of Environmental Quality, read the report. The last thing I want to have is an area being built up that's going to be damaging to someone's health. That's number one. I mean, that's our first lot, line of thinking, traffic, you know, just density. Those are the things that we as a planning commission should be thinking about. So with that, I thought I might share some comments or kind of like what I drafted up as a resolution, which I think covers a lot of the pieces of the areas that were mentioned on, from everyone's comment. Few missing items, but would that sound like a reasonable next approach to, to the planning commission?
Yes.
Works for me.
Sure. Okay, so the first thing I'm going to do is email everyone in their, with their hideout email on the planning commission that since, because I couldn't share that, you know, except in a public forum, you know, based upon the open public meetings, I thought I would share that with you now. So that, it's about, it's about two pages. It covers a lot of, almost every single point that we've thought through and that the comments cover or have been, you know, shared so far. So I'm going to do two things. Give me a second.
And Ralph, can you make sure you send it to Kathleen as well, so she can make it part of the record?
Absolutely. Now, I just need to find where I put it. It's in a draft form here. And the problem I'm having is I'm on the town site and it's. I'm not getting my email here, so give me one second. And so who else should I copy on this? Um, Kathleen?
Yep. Why don't you include me and Thomas as well?
Okay, of course.
Alicia as well, please Ralph.
Okay.
Thank you.
Damn. I'm having the hardest time. I'm gonna have to start all over again.
Can you just share it on the screen, Ralph?
I can, but it's, it's long enough and I'll do that anyway, but I really think everybody needs this in their hands. To be fair. I don't know about you, is, I don't read someone else's screen very well. And Tony, I'm not sure if you even. You'll have to, you know, you'll have to plug along with us.
Well, I'll be able to pull it up on my phone. I have, I have my town email on my phone, so.
Okay. Okay, I think that went out. Should have at least. Tell me if someone received it. And then I'll switch to another mode here. Um, in terms of sharing the document.
I got it Ralph.
Yeah, so do I.
Great. Power, I want the power of. The internet here. And now can you see the document on my screen in my word?
Yes.
No, normally when I'm at work at least, we usually give people, you know, ten minutes to to review this. Um, so they get a context of the words. Um, so now, and that's why I sent it around. Sometimes it's kind of quiet time. What would you, what would make you feel better about walking through some ideas at this first level, first draft of the blueprint?
Um, Ralph, I would just suggest maybe five minutes for everybody to read through it.
That's, that's usually the way we work, we do it at work. We give everybody kind of a quiet time. Um, to kind of, kind of review things and uh let's take five minutes. To do exactly that.
Ralph. Don't be slowly scrolling through, looks like you're doing that.
Yep.
I think this is a great blueprint, Ralph.
Would anyone like a, a minute or two more?
I would. I'm good.
Anyone else want a minute? And I know, Tony, um, is this on your phone? I mean.
Yeah, no, I'm good Ralph, I read through it.
I, I, I've been there, Tony, so when you're taking a call on the phone and you're trying to read. A document that's in about, you know, point six size, so to speak, so I uh bear, you know, bear with us, so, I mean. I I'll back up here to the top of this and. Um, at least try to give you an idea of what I was thinking when I was putting this together. Uh, and that is. One, we all had different opinions about exactly what, you know, the transparency and political elements. Were, you know, conditioned that we kind of out of our control. So, you know, given that. You know, what are the, you know, and maybe divorce ourselves again from some of that. It's pretty hard to do that. Cause I think we all have some pretty strong opinions. Um, but, you know, taking apart the, what I call assumptions, which I call core conditions, so. You know, kind of in a business contract, you would be saying, um, you know, what are the core assumptions that you are gonna build this? Contract on and so, you know, um, they're kind of, these are the conditions. These are baseline. If we can't, if we don't get those, this does not, you know, we're, we're, you can't even move forward, so. Right off the bat on the environmental, I would want it to at least meet or exceed any, any uh EPA standards. Any local, federal, you know, state standards. Um, that the infrastructure improvements are guaranteed or by, by the developer. Um, you know, some, some things around the commercial development and then, um. You know, I think there were a couple of comments on, on architectural theming and that we have veto rights to those, so. Offer us some suggestions, Mr. Developer, and um we'll come up with some feedback, but we haven't seen any on some of that. We've only heard, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll work with you. So we need, we need some, we need some re-proposals here. I don't know how anybody could possibly make a decision totally on just what we've been given, which is minimal. Um, you know, a layout and um no theming. I mean, the, the, this, the, the area is still, even at the reduced level. Is essentially the number of homes that are in hideout currently, so, you know, in a sense, we're doubling. Doubling production with no, with, with no good eye to, what does that mean? How do we do it? Um, and what does it look like? So, um, as you can see here. A pretty substantial, we could even go lower, you know, um, than this. You know, no townhomes, zero. Um, we added some cottages in here. Uh, but, you know, pretty significant reduction on single-family homes, even though that's what we want, that means larger lots. So more spacing between the homes.
Ralph, can I just stop and ask what, what's the definition of a cottage?
Um, a, a smaller affordable home. Uh, and and Thomas, can you give us the classic planning uh planner's definition of that?
No, you're, you're, you're basically right. Cottage development typically, um cottage housing is typically. Um, you could call it, um, it's a smaller affordable unit, or it could be, um, step into the housing market or step down out of. Um, a larger house, um, if you are older, uh, your kids have gone off to. College or moved out of the house and you want a smaller space, so it kind of o- offers a multi-dimensional opportunity for living.
Nope, um, a reduced condominium, sorry. Um, some, some reduction in multifamily. But, um, you know, overall, we went from. You know, Mr. Brockbanks eight thirty-six down sixty-one percent to three hundred and twenty-five. Keeping the same assisted living space for maybe some of our older generation or folks that need it. And then upping the commercial fifty-three percent so that we can get what we would set out to get. And that is uh more access to groceries and and some, some retail, so to speak. Whether they're, you know, restaurants or not, but not necessarily having fast food. I think there was a. Or at least a thought in there to that effect. So I'll, I'll stop here and, you know, I've just given you my, my thoughts. I think that incorporated a lot of our thoughts here, but. Um, any thoughts so far? Cause this is, these are, these are some significant drops. Um, you know, what, uh, essentially sixty-one, sixty percent drop from where. From uh the pro- proposal that we have in hand.
I, I did have a question. The town uh center commercial, does that include a fire station? The municipal park, um, you know, police station, fire station, town hall. Do you think that would include that? Is that what you were thinking and visioning?
That's not what I was thinking and and uh meaning that would all be separate property. Um, yes, so Thomas, can you uh, can you make sure I'm on the right track on that?
No, I think you're on the right track. I don't think we've been given that information, that level of detail, but I agree with you. I think that that would not be considered commercial. Be considered institutional kind of um, uh, more public service.
So, so my, so I was thinking we'd get, maybe we'd build a little bit more out on the commercial side so we get what we want. Um, and I can't remember, I know I saw some stats recently as the, the size of Smiths, I think it's. Maybe in the area of forty thousand square feet, so if we can get five eighths of that into a grocery store. I mean, that to me would, you know, a Trader Joe's kind of concept, maybe a little bit bigger than that. Um, I think that would suffice the needs for. And I'm thinking of, of our four or five communities, you know, again, Parks Edge, Retreat, Black Rock. And I think there's one other there as well, so, you know, getting them and 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 some. And and as well as to the homes that would be built here. And then the remainder would be, would be built out, so to speak. Um, so anyway, and any, any further thoughts on the reduction? Cause it's a pretty big reduction so far, um, unless you want to go down further. I mean, we can ask what we want.
I, in regard to that, the reduction, I have a question. I mean. Most of the condominiums are gonna be on top of the retail space, so why would, I mean, if you're asking to. Bump up the retail space, why would you dress, uh, cut the condominiums as much as you did?
Um, just for density purposes, Tony, that's what I was thinking, you know, strictly from. Uh, you know, some, you know, getting rid of the, you know, to your point, I think you, you and Bruce, Bruce both hit the point of. God, no more townhomes, um, at this point.
Well, I, I, I have to, I have to clarify that. I'm not against townhomes. I'm against him building a six-pack or a four-pack like we see down at Shoreline. I, I can live with some. Townhomes like we have in West LA, but not a hundred and eighty-two, you know.
I hear you. I, I, you know, to, to your point, Tony, I'm not sure how to answer that, how I came up, you know, I, I was thinking of. That reduction or, and then got some additional advice, so to speak. I think I, I dropped it in half and then went down further. Um, mostly just not to have so many multi-unit um homes in this area, which is. Is, is serving to, to balance out all the townhomes that we currently have in hideout. Plus the townhomes we have in uh the Parks Edge area. And if you look. At Parks Edge and, you know, Retreat, and a lot of those are, are four-packs and six-packs, and I think they're keep, keep buil- building them. And very similar, I think that may be the case in parts of Black Rock as well, so mostly just to reduce density. Um, and, you know, we could even just say no condominiums at all. Um, so, or we could say, take the sixty condominiums and make them townhomes. But they can't be town, you know, more than two, they have to be twin homes. So would that?
Well, my feeling is I think the condominiums will provide people. Who can't afford to buy a home, they can get into the condominium, and it could also be part of the workforce there, and it's easier for them. You know, especially, I mean, he had talked about all the parking for the condos to be. Underground, so to speak, so it will alleviate even the congestion in regard to, um, that.
And, you know, Ralph, one of the things that you could look at if you're exploring condominiums. I know that in the, um, in the plan that was originally presented, the affordable multifamily. Were kind of up on the hillsides and the condominiums were put over the town center. You could make the request that the condominiums and affordable housing, kind of that mixed income. Could be over the town center. That'd probably resolve your issue as well as Tony's issue of not wanting to lose too many down there. Because then you could have the sixty and the seventy-five over the town center, kind of a mixed income workforce and condo approach. So you're starting to get, you know, at that point, you're getting. you know, at that point, you're getting, you know, near hundred and twenty-five, hundred and thirty or so, which is pretty solid density.
And, and so, Thomas, are you suggesting that affordable multifamily would move closer to where the condos are or?
I think somebody had mentioned it earlier tonight. They didn't like the fact that the density was up on the hillside. Bring that down, right? So you could bring down the condos and the affordable multifamily, put those over the town center, and you're starting to get near the original number if.
Yeah, that was, that was me. That was Bruce that said that. And, and I agree. I think anything kind of multifamily or condominium should be near town. So I think that's a good solution. I kind of agree with Tony in the sense that if those buildings are going to be along the, you know, in the town center, then, then the density there is, is better than out on the hillside. But the one thing that Nate has on his plan is called a condominium hotel. And I'm not really sure, you know, what the definition of that is. Is that nightly rentals? Are we allowing nightly rentals? Have we talked about that? Is that something we need to talk about?
I remember, that's right. He had condominium hotel, not really a thought to that, but our, you know, our zoning, our new zoning eliminates, it continues to carry over our non-short-term rental. But a condom, but if it's classified as a condominium hotel, a hotel is, you know, nightly, weekly kinds of things. Thomas, can you, can you add any clarity to that?
So I think right now, the way your existing zoning, as you noted, your proposed zoning is outlined, the intent is to not have the, the short-term nightly rental. So I would think that that would, I don't think that that would be a permitted use. I'd have to look at the number of days we allow in that new, in the new zoning, but I would think that that would not be a permitted use. I would also tell you that if you don't want that to turn into secondary housing or turnover housing, if you want it to be workforce housing or, you know, mixed income housing above workforce housing, you wouldn't want a condo tell.
No.
I, I wanted to be condominiums long-term and workforce housing long-term.
Thomas, is there any distinction in the code, you know, between, so usually often a hotel is considered commercial and often a hotel can offer other amenities that are beneficial to a community such as, you know, gathering spaces, other support type facilities within. But I would be nervous where there's so much, you know, so much of a need for commercial services. Would it make, is it normal to have within planning some kind of distinction of hotel type use versus commercials, kind of strict commercial use?
I think that the answer to your question is yes, that is a good idea. I don't think that we have that differentiation in the code right now. I'm looking that up. I don't think that that differentiation is made.
I don't remember, you know, going through the zoning for a while, that there was a lot of in-depth definition around that, Thomas. Yeah. That's my recollection as well.
I'll look that up as we're going, but I don't think that we define the difference between those two, actually.
Well, given that, though, we still have, we have, we still have the whites, you know, we have the whiteboard here, so to speak, in our control. So we can define this going into what we're asking the developer to provide in terms of that kind of housing. So whether it's in our code or not, you know, because we're going to run into exceptions, no matter what we do in projects like this, that we, you know, we, we, we get what we want, so to speak, at least inputted into this rather than some lack of clarity or some ambiguous wording that's not going to serve our interests or a town's interest going forward. Donna, you want to say something?
Yeah. Before we go on any further, I want, I mean, I pulled up, I took a picture of the, on my phone tonight, picture of the, of the plans that Nate had given us. And I don't see a, a condo tell on the plan. Is that something that's, I mean, help me out. I, I mean, I didn't even know was even an option or even discussed.
I'm going to switch views here a little bit and try to go back to.
And just while you're pulling back that view, I apologize. It does, if that, if that land down there is designated as not neighborhood commercial, but commercial, a condominium hotel is a permitted use. If it's designated, I know we haven't discussed the zoning for that, but if it was designated as a neighborhood commercial, that would not be a permitted use.
So just to the right of where it says town center, if you scroll down just one more, Ralph, you'll see a line that's pointing to that L-shaped building.
Oh, I see. Okay. That was cut off on my screen. Yeah, I did not know there was a, I mean, and this is the other thing, you know, don't, are we, we're going to have a condo tell across the street by Black Rock, are we not? There's going to be a, the two skating rinks or three skating rinks and the big, the high rise over there by Black Rock.
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't have the.
Hotel, condo tell is what I call them.
Yeah, I see. There's a, there's a difference between, on the left of that, that particular building and a little bit above, you see three other buildings that say condominiums over structured parking with retail work at street level. I think that's something that would be fine in town. Condominium hotel, no. So maybe that's when we cut our numbers. That's what we're cutting out.
And that could also be how that area is zoned. If it's designated, maybe neighborhood commercial for the town center, which is a fitting zone versus commercial. Neighborhood, not allow a condo tell.
So going back to the numbers, we can just say condominiums, no condominium hotel. And, and we're, and we're giving them, and we're giving Nate the reduced number.
Right.
Based, based upon our recommendation.
And he, he could move some of the workforce housing into that particular area away from the developments, villages.
Which is, well, this is, this, this is the assisted living.
And Ralph, workforce is right up under where your hand, kind of the hand is for the PDF. If you go up to the top of what we see.
Yeah.
See it?
It's almost like an H building there or four buildings.
The, and right above the legend on the right, where it says kind of in white, development area, project area above there is affordable housing, multifamily with the line across. That's where the affordable is proposed.
Gotcha.
Kind of about the school.
Well, I could see his point, putting it close to the school, not having to cross, you know, Richardson's Flats Road. But then, you know, I don't know, I mean, there was lots to the left. There was, they're, they're all single family lots behind the, I mean, maybe, I don't know if they could do the, yeah. I mean, I like the idea personally, I like the idea of the cottages. I think that's a, a nice option. And, you know, I, I'd be fine to even increase the number of cottages. You know, I, I agree. I don't like the six plexes really, and even four plexes. I live in a twin here and I think, I think that's probably as far as I would go also, or the twins. And, and I believe Tony and Bruce and, you know, I think you two, Ralph, are correct. I think we have a lot in this area. A lot of townhomes and we can use some, some single family homes, more single family homes.
Tucking those up around the school probably makes sense, right? That's probably the market as well as a solid location for slightly increased density, rather than taking those up the hillside too far.
You mean right here, this, the building we're looking at, Thomas?
It could be there even just down a little bit, but maybe that area, if it is high density now, maybe that area as you, as the cottage area. And I think, you know, ultimately, I think with your recommendations tonight, moving forward, hopefully Nate would take the opportunity to look at a few different concepts based on your input. And I think that we, that, that we can ask for that. I think we should ask for that. So that we could get a sense of how that would lay out.
Right.
Well, we can ask for, we can ask for more than one rendition of his next level concept. At, at least at this point, we can ask for what we want, so to speak. So we might have a couple of different thoughts coming out of this in terms of options to ask for. And then my guess is if we go down from three fifty-two to one fifty on the single families and a reduction of the, the townhomes to zero, the configuration of a couple of these areas, the villages themselves may contract. This could even, this could even potentially contract to nothing, or it would have to expand based upon quote unquote, the size of the lot, so to speak. So, but I'm guessing it might even go away entirely because he'll probably have enough lot space to suffice for the hundred fifty homes. And, and, you know, potentially meet all the, all the requirements. Maybe these become, that maybe these become, those really just double in size or something based upon the numbers we're getting to one fifty versus over three fifty-two. Essentially, you have, you know, sixty, we're going to lose sixty percent of these potential lots. So, okay.
Well, we don't know the size of those lots, right? They look awful small.
They look smaller up here, Bruce, and I'm not sure why, but I doubt they're drawn to scale at this point. So, but I think we've, you know, if, if the density drops from, call it eight thirty-six to three fifty-two, we know that there's going to be more land available for the homes. So whether they're, whether the, although this area, if we, you know, if there's still the condos in here and there's still the buildings for, call it affordable housing, assisted living, the only things we're adding is the cottages. We're just, we're subtracting pretty much everything and just adding cottages.
Ralph, I mean, and this is only my opinion, I don't think we should eliminate all the townhomes. I think if, and I'm talking, when I say a number, I'm talking about total amount of doors. If, if that was kept to forty to fifty, I think, I don't think they would stand out in regard to the overall project. Whereas if you're looking at Parks Edge or Rustler or Black Rock, where that's all there is.
Well, Tony, would you give?
I mean, as long, as long as they kept them to a, a twin unit.
Right. Okay. So we could add, we, we could, you know, our recommendation then is and I'm just hypothetically, you know, thinking through this, we could ask for townhomes. We could potentially reduce some other homes, or we could add townhomes to the equation of three fifty-two. But I think we, you know, every time we do, we add more homes, whether they're twin homes or otherwise, they are going to, you know, eat up more space and more land, and more land area here. So we'll have greater density. You know, to some extent, maybe we should figure out what does it, you know, is there anybody who has, has a hard number in mind in terms of density here that we, that they would want to go above, so to speak, before we even go on to potentially giving some feedback on numbers.
I had a question, but maybe, maybe Thomas can answer this because since he's in planning and, I mean, and understands these concepts. As far as like, what do you think the density should be to be able to support this town center? And a school?
I mean, it, it, you know, that, that's a hard question, right? I think that I would say that this town center not only will serve hideout, I mean, I think that it will serve the Jordanell Basin, certainly PC Heights, Black Rock, et cetera, et cetera, what's going on in Mayflower. I think that you'll start to see it serve a much larger area in the sense that people would try to avoid making the trip down to Kimball or Silver Creek, for example, Kimball Junction or Silver Creek, for example. So I think the, I think its area of reach can be as much as, I think Nate said, fifteen or twenty thousand units are proposed in this area. And I think based on, you know, back of the napkin numbers, that's about right. So I think that I would think of this commercial area as serving as a town center for all of that. So if you're thinking is a hundred and twenty-five thousand too big or small, I think, you know, you're looking at probably a range, but I bet more than eighty thousand, given the need for grocery store, some experiential shopping and, you know, entertainment, you know, bars, restaurants, coffee shops, that kind of thing, right? I think that it could be north of eighty, maybe less than one twenty-five thousand that you've got illustrated on here, but I think that that's about the right range. I think that there's a significant amount of residential development already entitled in and around the area. So I think it is supportable.
Okay. And, and they, the road shift, you know, the single family lots above, I believe it's, that would be above the town center. I mean, what do you think, do you think that would be prime property, looking down on the town center with the lighting? You know, maybe, you know, I'm thinking, I don't know if, if you attract you know, single family homes there.
Are you talking about the area right?
To the left of the town center, that one street.
Oh, that, that, that has some elevation, actually. There's, it's, it's, it's above the town center. It's probably got some pretty good views. You know, you'll want to be cautious of ridge line and development in those areas, right? But I bet that that may be desirable. But if you're talking right to the left of where it says town center, there, that is a bit of a ridge up there, actually.
That's, that's the very top of the ridge there.
So it's steep. So, okay. Because, you know, I was thinking, I'm like, oh, that might be a good spot for, well, you know, the higher, more higher density of twin homes if we were thinking about that. You know, and then have large lots someplace else, but.
I don't think you'd want to see mass and scale up there. I think you'll, you'll, you'll be concerned about single family development, ridge line construction up there, view sheds. That'll be something you want to be aware of. Yeah, it doesn't look, you don't see the topography here very well, unfortunately, but it's pretty steep.
I know. I even suggested, I was thinking, I'm like, we should take a field trip out there and actually walk this, you know, and, and check it out and have, you know, somebody point out to us, this is where we were thinking, you know, this would be where the single family homes were in, in the town center. And, you know, it's, it's, for me, it's hard to visualize on this piece of paper.
And if, if you did need to try to visualize it, I think, do you have the full four-page document that Nate submitted, Ralph, on here? You could go to the, the bottom couple of pages. Do attempt to show some 3D, which are pretty informative for those who don't see plan view as.
This, this 3D here, Thomas?
Yep. So if you, yep, you could start to see where, there you go, a little bit, you can start to see. Donna, does that help you? Can you start to see where those units are? Okay.
Yeah. Oh, I see. Over to the right, then to the right over here.
That's right. So they're coming up toward where Richardson Flats goes into the Wasat Springs area, right? So you're consistently rising there.
Right, right. Okay. And you'll have a view of Park City probably and the canyons.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's helpful.
And there's some other images that, different angles that might help you kind of orient a little bit. Yeah.
I was going to suggest we go back to the resolution and see whether or not we want to now, after we kind of beat up the, the, you know, projection of where things might be. And we've gotten some comments. I mean, my first, my first thought was, what's the maximum, you know, we want to, we want to put, you know, as a number? And then how do we split that up, so to speak? But that's, that was my starting point. And, and then kind of, I went down to zero here, but to Tony's point, I think, Donna, did you say the same thing, that we'd be willing to consider townhomes if they were twin homes and not the, the, the high-density four plexes and six plexes?
Yes. I, I, I agree. I mean, yeah, the twin homes, I think that would be, that, I would like that more.
So I'm just going to do some editing here and just say twin homes only. And.
Ralph, are you, are you looking for a total number from people just as to what, after what's all?
Well, I'm just trying to see, I'm just trying to create some edits in here while we're, you know, kind of a, you know, a live operating document resolution. And I'm not sure if we'll get through it tonight, Tony, but mostly, you know, the first thing I think, again, to my view was this is, this, this reduction of sixty percent, sixty-one percent gets us down to three twenty-five. Is that a good number? Should we go lower? Should we consider going higher? And then what are the primary splits between what we think is a good reasonable split between single family homes? If we add back in twin homes, what would my, what might that be now that we have some cottages and we've left some condominiums in here? So I think that's what we could feed back to what we think is the right mix in general.
I, I think the sixty percent reduction is a little on the large side personally. I mean, especially since, like I said, we're, we're increasing the retail space. I would think you'll be able to put more condominiums on top of the retail. I mean, I would be happy with somewhere between no more than four seventy-five to five hundred doors, so to speak. I mean, I know that's less than fifty percent of a, but I still think that's a big number when you're taking away cost of four hundred units from the developer.
Right. And I was thinking about half of what, half of the eight thirty-six. I was thinking right around four hundred, I think would be a, you know, I, I do think sixty-one is a little bit large also.
I have a heavy pen.
You know, kind of a rule of thumb you could think about is almost, they're, they're, they're zoned at what, one to one hundred and twenty acres? So they're at three units now, give or take. You could think about it as almost a rule of thumb is almost one to one, one unit to one acre, which if you ended up at around three fifty-two, I mean, as a, as a, as a recommendation. Of course, there, there's a desire to, to partner, but to establish kind of floors and ceilings, I think is important. I think that you could look at, kind of thinking about one to one acre, not that we'd spread it out over the entire area. Of course, there's open space preservation requirements, but as a, as a, as a best practice rule of thumb, you could think about something like that.
Another thing you might also want to consider is, I, I know that, or I believe there's no affordable housing requirement in hideout. I do know Summit County has a requirement of twenty percent. So just to, I don't, and that seems, that's kind of a standard number. So that might be something to consider in terms of number, you know, of what, what you would expect.
And along that line, if you did that, I'm just doing the math as we're going. If you did utilize three hundred and fifty-two, just say roughly one unit per one acre, that twenty percent would be seventy units. You've got seventy-five. So you, you kind of start to get there. In which case, if you're at a total of three hundred and twenty-five now, and you want some townhomes or twin homes, if you wanted to be near that three fifty-two, you could add twenty-seven to the townhomes, twin homes, to start to give your recommendation for the developer to work with in terms of conceptual development, right? I mean, it could go higher or lower. I mean, depending, right?
Or we could go right to three seventy-five, then to Polly's point, you know, and that would be kind of where I'm thinking my max idea would be. And I know Donna mentioned four hundred and, and Tony mentioned a little bit over four hundred, but, but if we started with the seventy-five as twenty percent, that is what, three seventy-five?
So put in, you're saying fifty townhomes?
Well, we'd have to then look at what is our split in here. We could, you know, so to speak, we could, so let's just yeah, we just keep that, we, we change this to three seventy-five. That keeps us at our required twenty percent and we could put in.
Well, technically, Ralph, the twenty percent is not required. Because we don't have, we don't have a.
But I, I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
Oh, and the fact that it's not a good idea. Please don't get me wrong. I, I'm just saying, let's just be conscious of the fact that we don't have something in writing that says this is a percentage that you have to build.
Well, not at this point, but the town might have to do that in the future. So this would kind of create a, a baseline for this development to meet those standards in the future. So we, we would, we would basically be, we would be covering our behind, going, you know, going out five years. We wouldn't have to say, oh, we need, we've got to find five more homes here to balance out, you know, the twenty percent. So.
That wouldn't be our issue, Ralph. That would be Nate's issue. I mean, my suggestion is you're, you're going to three seventy-five and let's say we're putting in the fifty townhomes to get to that number. For argument's sake, let's just add twenty-five condos because we're considering, we're considering asking for a third more retail space. And then to put the condos on top of the retail and come out to four hundred, let Nate worry about finding the four extra units to get, bring it up to, you know, eighty from seventy, five extra units to bring it up from seventy-five to eighty.
Yeah, no, I, I, I follow you. I'm not sure we're buying that much one way or another. So I guess then the big question, the biggest question is how far do we go up in the total number? And, you know, can we, yeah, this is, this is a recommendation, you know, he doesn't have to buy into anything. And don't forget, this is just a recommendation to council. They might make some other, have some other considerations. And they might, they might have, you know, no thought to what we're providing at all. They could.
No, I, I agree. And I'm sure they're going to, they're going to revise it to some extent, some, some, at some point, some way.
But I, but I do think this is helpful, giving good direction to him. Again, I think that certain numbers and percentages might tweak. And I think that you should ask for some different, you know, some concepts, some layouts that start to play with those numbers. But I think this definitely gives good direction.
If you don't ask for the affordable housing in this, you won't be able to ask for it down the line.
Is your affordable housing asked here as part of the master development agreement? It's not part of the zoning. It's part of the MDA. So you, you can ask for it here, but otherwise you can't ask for it.
Right. And I would also ask that as you look at this, you know, we also consider, look, do you think that the zoning as requested is appropriate? And so let's make sure not just to change and say, okay, we want X number of single family, but that it is zoned appropriately so that it reflects what your wishes are. And as part of the master development, you can also say, even though this is the zoning, we are going to require a maximum density for that zone because of the master development agreement. But you want to, the zoning to try to reflect the type of housing so that it is consistent as possible.
So would you, Polly, how would you suggest we move forward on that? Is there, is there wording we need to add to that effect? Do you have any?
I, I think we could add wording to that effect. In Nate's submittal, he did on his second page, I think he had some proposed zoning recommendations that kind of overlaid his site plan. He had some R twenties, the residential twenty unit per acre in the workforce housing area, et cetera. I think that maybe if we work with these numbers and ask him to prepare a new overlay for the zoning district, I think that that, that, that would be helpful. But I think that some of what you've mentioned tonight is that you want to see some single family. You probably want some, you've outlined some mountain residential zoning, which is single family zoning. I think asking to see that on that map would be helpful because I don't think that the original submittal included any of the mountain residential, for example. And maybe again, town center isn't commercial. Maybe it's neighborhood commercial, which allows for most of the commercial that you've outlined here tonight.
Yeah, I, I, I definitely need to, you know, have him come back with more, several iterations and get better idea of what it looks like. You know, as a lot less singer, single family homes on bigger lots, where, how will it look? How will you blend in the townhomes? Because fifty townhomes would be like a shoreline phase one. You don't want them all in one spot. So how would he spread them out? And, and we could then take up the zoning to ensure that, like Polly said, that, that that's the way, you know, those are the areas where you can do that and the other areas have to be zoned accordingly as well.
And I think we're asking, you know, a lot of change here. So with these baselines at least, but we would ask Nate for at least, you know, a new overlay, probably two, potentially two different versions or variations of what his approach to this level of density would be. So I think that just follows with what we're asking for. But maybe we have to explicitly, I think we have to explicitly ask for that, otherwise we might not get it. But let's get two variations based upon this level of density to see what then, okay, Mr. Developer, what is your concept based upon what we're feeding back to you here in terms of numbers?
No, that's a good approach.
Okay. Do we want to continue on this section here? I know it's so important, but you know, we have to, do we want to move on? I, you know, I'd like to move on and move to, at least to a point where we can look at this holistically, you know, and, and consider the other last half dozen items within our considerations that we're, that we're asking, recommending to go forward and without of which we're, we're not recommending, so to speak. That's the way I see it at least. So I think we have kind of.
I just, if we go forward, what number are we, have we come to a, some kind of agreement on, on the number that we're recommending in regard to doors?
Right. I did, I, I have three seventy-five right now based upon the twenty percent and adding back fifty townhomes, Tony. I don't know if you can see this change that I made in the document. If anyone, if, if anybody has strong feelings to go above four hundred, I mean, we're, we're basically border. And don't forget, this may change. It may move up because this gives us, in my opinion, Tony, it gives, it gives the council some reason, some level of negotiation. If we, if, if we say six hundred now, it'll be eight hundred by the time we get done. So.
My only, my only issue with that number is I would like to see it to go to four hundred and add twenty-five units to the condominiums for the simple fact that we're asking for another twenty thousand square feet of retail space or commercial space. And you could, I think you could put fit twenty-five condominiums on top of that if we get that.
So I think what you're saying, Tony, is bring it to four hundred and you would be feel good about this and bring the number of condominiums and, and to, and, and again, these might have to be even numbers. That might be, call it, you know, eighty-four and then.
Eighty-four.
Yeah, eighty-four and then affordable multiple housing might be, well, then it would have to be a hundred.
It would go, it would go up to eighty.
Would have to be eighty. So let's figure out, let's, let's, let's keep doing that math and see what it comes out. Eighty, then we come up here and this would be.
Do you basically have four and four, I think? If you're adding four, four more to them and then twenty-five.
Well, this would be, this, this would be eighty and eighty. That brings us up to two hundred, four hundred. That brings us up to the four hundred. We're still in quote, quote unquote, compliance. We're, we're in that twenty percent. So it would be four hundred total units, eighty multi, eighty affordable multifamily, eighty condos. And then the other numbers stay the chain, stay, stay the same. We meet the twenty percent future requirement. And the cottages, townhomes, which are now twin homes and single family stay the same.
Well, you say to stay the same because you had the, you had the townhomes at zero. So, I mean, have you raised that number to fifty?
I, I increased it on the table to fifty.
Okay, yeah. No, I've just not going back and forth on the phone to look at the chart. That's why I'm asking.
And I, I couldn't tell if you could see the live edits here, but single family, Tony. So I'll, I'll be clear with you. Single.
No, I'm, I'm happy with those numbers, Ralph, the way you just, I understand everything you said. And I'm happy with, I'm, I'm fine with those numbers, I should say.
Okay. I, I don't want, I, I'm personally not going to go above four hundred. So if anybody else wants to go above four hundred, let's have that discussion.
And, and I would say that you, you would want to think about this from a contingency perspective in terms of eighty condos and multifamily over, over the residential, or I'm sorry, over the commercial, the town center development. You want to en, ensure that there's a traffic study and understanding of parking analysis, et cetera, so that that amount of density is, is supported there without major traffic issues, major parking issues, major amounts of asphalt, et cetera. You want to ensure that that is, that is doable. That's pretty dense. At eighty and eighty, you're at one sixty, you're, you're half the town of hideout as built out right now, almost, right? That's a significant amount of density.
I was going to suggest increasing the single family versus increasing the condos, but you know, I don't know if anybody else felt that way too, but then we're going to be also above four hundred if we go.
Well, we can drop the condos, Donna. So we could drop the condos to sixty and move the single families to one seventy, as an example.
I mean.
But then you're taking away from the open space, Ralph, whereas the condos are sitting on top of commercials.
Oh, we're still, we're still guaranteed. And yeah, we're still going to maintain that at least two hundred acres in open space. That, that's kind of a given. Maybe the lots change slightly, but I think we could support that. I don't know, Thomas, can, can you give us your, you know, high-level view? Could we support twenty more single family homes, maintaining the two hundred acres and reducing the density around the village?
It's hard to say without seeing any kind of layout or the, the, the road infrastructure that would be proposed as part of this. But what I would say is this, I think that if you run with this layout, you know, three fifty to four hundred, I think that that starts to give everybody an idea of what kind of density you're talking about, right? And if you're looking at a hundred and sixty units above the town center, maybe there's a, maybe there's a, a requirement for podium parking or underground parking for a significant percent, a set percent of those that could be included in a, in an agreement. Because I don't think that you want to see that much asphalt in that area, right? Especially if your goal is to try to create a walkable town center.
Right.
Underground parking, I think, is, is a good, very good suggestion and is key. I think that's great.
Well, I mean, do you want to, for one, we're, since we're in this, do we want to vary up the number of single families and reduce the density in the area? I mean, mostly, Thomas, do you think, what we don't want to do, to your point, is create an over-dense situation that is only going to give us problems either by, from a road standpoint, from a transportation standpoint? And if that's unsupportable, we're, you know, we're, we're not achieving our end goal here.
Well, I'd say, I think you're right at a threshold. Maybe there's, I, I'd say work with these numbers. And I think to your point earlier, we ask for two or three concepts. I mean, maybe they deviate a little bit as to what actually fits. We haven't done the math in terms of what does fit above this proposed town center commercial, right? And so I guess I would say stay here and with these numbers and make a recommendation that the condos and affordable multifamily minimum seven. Minimum seventy-five percent of that has to be either podium, hidden parking, or underground parking, something to that effect, and then. I think have Nate and his team come back and show you what this starts to look like, we don't, we don't know yet, right? I I think that the planning commission is put in the position of responding to a a plan and. This one hasn't been fully developed, designed and or evolved.
Yeah. Okay, and of course, um, we're in this short um, window here. So the more prescriptive, I think, to some, to some extent, we can get the better off. We're providing the next recipient of this, of this information, which is the town council. So um, yeah, I'm concerned about that density unless they split it up as well, so maybe that affordable multifamily. Moves slightly, you know, off the the center axis, so to speak. Um, so that at least it appears less tense, um, because, you know, it's going to look like, you know, you have. Um, you know, a city inside of a a town, so.
You know, but if you wanted, you could take, you could take some of that affordable multifamily off there. And you could put twenty-five affordable cottage units, deed restricted cottage units, if you thought that was a better solution. And maybe located around the school, something to that effect, that's always an option as well.
So like dropping this piece here and putting a little bit more in the cottages.
Right, and ensure that, you know, maybe if you drop affordable multifamily by. Twenty, maybe you add it to the cottage and we designate twenty cottage units as deed restricted affordable housing. It's less tense.
Right. Any thoughts to that? I can add another row here and say deed restrictable, but Tony, what, sorry, go ahead. So we could say. Were you saying a number like twenty, drop this down twenty?
Yes.
The affordable, no, not.
Actually, I think you went the affordable, maybe it went from eighty to sixty condos, I think we're at eighty. And that way you still maintain the twenty percent.
Sorry, that would be four twenty, right?
No, 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 you you would drop the affordable multifamily down to sixty.
Right.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. We're going to reduce that number, eighty, eighty, and then, so, okay, that the numbers work there. Does that make sense? Thomas?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we're back to four hundred, but we just dropped the number of um. Affordable, the the affordable multifamily a little bit lower, however. That 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 brings us down to the the nod, oh, that's right, these these count as. These count as in the twenty percent equation, right? Tom- Thomas Polly, yeah.
Yes.
So we, okay, so we met the requirements, good.
Because you're affordable multifamily, but also be deed restricted, oh, same thing, yeah.
Good, oh, that that's, that sounds like a nice balance. Um, okay, moving on, um, we do want, it's, I said we would be out of here, Donna, by eight thirty. And I know Tony's on the east, on east coast time, so I'm going to try to put this on us to. Kind of set a time limit upon which we either move this forward, or we're going to say we can't, we. We can't find common grounds to create a resolution. Because I'm not, I I don't know about you, but I'm not sitting here through, you know, four hours, you know, you know, in another, unless we do another meeting.
You know, Ralph, Jerry would be very disappointed in you.
Well, I don't know if Jerry works, so uh. Donna and I are up at, Donna's up at four, I'm up at uh, five thirty, so to speak, so.
So I'm okay.
I I I have to leave at five in the morning to drive five hours down to Frankfurt, Kentucky.
So, let's, let's, let's try to, how about another, um, how about to nine fifteen? Good, let's get through this and, you know, got to put time limits on everything.
Okay.
Listen, I I I I'm willing to stay up, Ralph, and so we can get this done and forwarded to the council, I mean, and that's just me, so.
Okay, um, I'm open to a to being reasonable here. Um, as long as we're making progress, I think we made actually a fair amount of progress, because I think we hit some of the hardest part. Which is, um, you know, the. The 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 number of housing, how we wanted to split them up, and what our, what our recommendation going forward is, that's a tough one. To kind of get to, get through, but let's, let's wordsmith any of this, the the remainder of these five or six bullet points here.
I have a question about number two, um, do you mean, it says here, a couple of sentences down. We understand negotiations after, it says, uh. Were you talking about, which is additional connections include the ability to provide trail, provide rail or other public transit, Mayflower, Deer Valley. Um, where did I, where did I read it that, I didn't understand, did you mean to have a lift from the top of Richardson's flat? Also down, there it is, down to Deer Springs or Deer Waters, or just have a, I I was under the impression. The lift that Nate had suggested would go to the peak and stop, and it's for biking down. Were you talking about Ralph here at Deer Springs?
Um, to Deer Springs and Deer Waters, so yeah, this is additional, uh, this is an additional. So to speak, ad that we're asking for here. And and that as a result of that ad, we will, uh, it will probably be necessary to secure an easement. Um, to do that, and that, uh, we expect Nate to operate in, you know, good faith. Um, in terms of ensuring that connection is made and the easements are are created. So I would characterize those two sentences, or I'm sorry, three sentences as together, so to speak. It looks, it's a little bit run on, Donna, in terms of the, in terms of the sentences, so just breaking it up as to the logical um, sections here.
So Ralph, the concept here is that there's a, if there's a lift up to the top of. What was designated Richardson Peak, there could also be a lift down toward. Deer Springs or Deer Waters hideout to the trail system, so that people in hideout could have carless access all the way to the town center. Oh, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And the next piece goes even a little bit further, Donna, um, you know, so to speak, to. Create a better transit, non, non-car, non-auto transit. To the Mayflower area, Deer Valley, and potentially Park City, I know Nate had kind of. Uh, squashed that, saying it was nine million a mile to start doing some of those things. Um, but let's take a look at some of this, because this is a big project, um, you know, certainly there's got to be. Five to ten million dollars, I mean, if you look at the total value of a project, but, you know, the back of the envelope spreadsheet. Um, we're talking several hundred million dollars, so I think in any kind of situation like that. Um, if I was in negotiations in a business sense, I would, I would pull at least two or three percent out to do something, you know. Call it, call it marketing, in this case, we're asking for some, some transportation. And um, and and uh, and and not that is beholden by the town or by other public cost. It's beholden to coming out of the developer's pocket. So that was where I was heading toward on this side of things.
Because I I was under the impression that from hideout, like from deer, okay, deer springs, deer waters. I thought there is a trail that goes up to the rail trail. I mean, it's a dirt trail right now, I guess, is there anything else planned for that? Um, I mean, I took the trail. So, and I took it downhill, I didn't go uphill, but um. You you know, I I thought there was a connection already, so there there, is that?
I don't think, though, I don't think those are connected, I think that with the continuation of uh, some of the work in Wasatch Springs, et cetera, that may. That'll be connected in the future, um, but I don't think that's connected now, and I think that. The issue might be getting up and over that hill, and to your point, getting back up the hill without some sort of a lift, I think the the. Carless connectivity is where you're going here, Ralph, which makes sense.
Yeah, and part of my thought was, again, you know, bring us, being, bringing us all closer to the ski lifts in one fashion or other. But certainly to tie together, and you know, I don't know how many times Nate's mentioned this, tie together the trail system. So we want someone um, who, you know, could bike over to the town center. Um, buy their groceries, could walk over, someone who wanted to go to the Jordanell. Could eventually, you know, like, just to take a walk from Park's Edge, or um, you know, any of the homes in the villages. Um, or maybe even, um, you know, the retreats, all those areas could have access to the Jordanell, there's. More people from this area, you know, take, take advantage of those trail, of that trail system. So there's got to be some interinterconnectivity and improved, um, you know, call it access. And I'm not sure exactly what that might be, let Nate come back and propose something to us as to, you know. What an effective set of trails would be, both walking, biking, and potentially what I would call motorized. You know, where we could get to, you know, you could take a Deer Springs, Deer Waters. Um, person and put them at, you know, at top of Richardson's flat, but maybe potentially we could all connect. Easier to a deer, you know, Deer Valley, the back of Deer Valley, if you want to go skiing as well, so. Yeah, I mean, we're, maybe we're asking for a lot, but if we don't ask for it here, it may never happen.
Yeah, I mean, if if I was going to go skiing in Deer Valley, I would probably drive, you know, I mean, because you. Carrying your ski gear and everything, um, you know, either, I would probably drive down the Jordanell Expressway from here. You know, I, you know, I don't know how many people would 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 take a gondola. Down to, you know, or or there are Deer Springs to take a gondola up. I mean, maybe I'm just up to to Richardson's peak, I mean, to get to the.
I was thinking, this is an idea, anyway, you know, we have a lot of parking over by the town center. You know, with that huge parking lot, so to speak, and people could use that as a, as a connecting point into. Um, with the town center and a connecting point into the Deer Valley, and I don't know if you've been to Deer Valley last year. But there's no parking left, um, you know, you have to, you know, by midday, by by ten AM in the morning, you have to park like three lots away. So why not take your, why not, why not have some fast public transportation, which makes. All of our homes, all of those homes in this area, that much more valuable, so that you don't necessarily have to take. You know, your, you know, your, you know, your SUV over and find no parking after ten o'clock, so. This opens you up maybe to take a midday run when there's no parking. Um, available up at the back of Deer Valley, and you could do an afternoon run and have, and and operate from your home, so to speak. Or from easier centralized transportation, that's where I'm going on some of this. I know I'm thinking, maybe I'm thinking too far into this, Donna, but I'm just thinking, five years out, there's going to be no. Availability for parking um, after, there isn't now, you know, for Deer Valley.
Well, you have to remember, Deer Valley also restricts how many people they allow to, you know, on the mountain. If they're going to continue to do that with COVID, you know, that's another question.
Yeah, at the same time, they're talking about putting fifty more runs in there, you know, so. They're talking about opening up another whole side of the mountain, now, will that include parking and all the other stuff? I don't know, I just think this would be a good protection mechanism for anybody bought a home in this area, particularly in this new development. To have alternative transportation to their, um, at least to Deer Valley.
Well, I like it, you're thinking out of the box.
Ralph, you got to realize too, not for nothing, that Mayflower project is not part of Deer Valley, that's a separate entity. They, I mean, they are trying to negotiate an agreement, but that's just a separate mountain. As it stands now.
Yeah, agreed, and and, you know, I mean, I, I mean, we can talk about all the issues with Deer Valley, and will they open it up to. You know, snowboard and and the rest of the situation, but let's just make transportation um, easier. And more affordable and more available to the, to the folks in hideout, Park's Edge, Retreat at Jordanell. Um, you know, all the folks in and in around that area who could potentially, in two or three or four years. Take advantage of, you know, not having to take their car all the time. Um, unless it was like first thing in the morning, but again, afternoon skiing, there's just no availability for anything, anyway.
No, but I mean, once, once the roadwork is in, it would be a great thing for um. A bus run route two or three times a day, you know, from through the town center to the gond- to the gondola.
Yep, absolutely, um, and just like Park City buses. So, you know, I'm not trying to engineer anything with these words, more like, you bet we better, let's think two and three and four years out. As a result of this, and let's make some kind of statement to the effect that we expect. In Nate's next plan to be thinking about this a little bit more, rather than just saying. Um, it's too expensive and it's a nine million dollar, you know, per mile track, um, if we don't ask now, we don't get it. Sorry for being so harsh on this, but you know, I just think, if we, if if we don't, if, I'm not saying we're demanding. Um, but we're at least strongly asking that this be part of his next concept plan.
No, like you said, all we can do is, we can ask, you know, and see what it says, if we don't ask, it's not going to be included.
Exactly, it'll never, we'll never have it, you know, we're never, we're not, we're certainly not going to have anything. After something passes, um, you know, the likely of that happening is, you know, you know, Tony, it's going to be. Nil to none, so to speak.
Yeah.
So let's, let's, let's get what we want upfront in the concept, you know, he can, he can define, he can give us a couple of alternatives, but. Let's put something in here that makes sense, um, you know, uh, for access to the, call it the areas that are most. Uh, used by the people who move here, so um. Okay, un- unless there's any other points, then, I'm sorry, I'm keeping to my guns on that one, so to speak. Only because I think it benefits a lot of people, not just us on the phone. You want to move to number three, you you okay with number two so far? Anyone, anyone still have any comments?
All right, yep, let's go to three. I mean, I think that, I think that looks great, you know, you definitely want to have a commercial area. As I believe you had said, Ralph, or Bruce. Um, you know, you don't want to have residential and and not have any commercial. So it would be good if it was started toward the beginning of the project.
The first half of the phases, so if it's a four pla- four phase, we want it in the first two, if it's a six phase. In the first three kind of thing, if it's five, it's in the first three. Um, I don't think that's an, I don't think that's an, that's an unburdening, burdensome ask, because. Um, that's what, that's what we're going into this for, you know, early.
Yeah, that's the whole, that's the whole issue that's driving this, is the commercial for the town, so.
And I don't think we've defined it so exacting here that. Um, he couldn't give us a couple of different approaches to this that would fit the, these general requirements. Any other thoughts, uh, Bruce, and anything on your end?
No, I'm good with this one.
Well, if everybody's, Donna, you still, you okay? Do you have any other?
Yeah.
I'm I'm good with it, Ralph.
Let's go to, I think we have four, five, six, and seven here.
We basically covered this.
I think so too. I mean, we're just asking for um, the things we've already set out, that, you know, in the, in the zoning. Um, and, and, and we're, and about the last sentence, I think summarizes, you know, hey, all the concerns we have are stated here, need to be addressed in the next iteration of the plan. So, you know, show us something um on the next phase here.
Yeah, it looks good to me. Number five. I like the idea of ice skating rink. Although there's gonna be a couple across the street, but that, I like the idea of it, you know, in the neighborhood. I think that's a nice.
Be outdoors, and um, it's something I, I happened to see up at Touhey, where they just created a, a recreational center, and they've got I don't know if it's one or, I think it's a ba, a basketball court and a pickleball court. And all I have to do is put out some uh, like a surround in the wintertime, and then they can flood it. And they got a little Zamboni that cleans it off, and you've got an ice skating rink for your, your neighborhood.
I think that's great.
And, and we haven't defined everything, you know, absolutely. Nate, come back and show us what you're, you know, what you're, how you can meet these kinds of parameters in our vision.
Right.
And Ralph, I think like 200 acres here that should be undisturbed or open space. I think right now, they're submitted at about 206. You could potentially, given the reduced density, get that up to 250. Um, I mean, it's certainly up to the planning commission, but with, they're at about 206.
I like that. It was, well, Thomas, will that support, because we're at the higher densities and some of the additions that we, we left? Um, will that support, it should support that, right?
It should, it should easily support it, yeah. I think that, yeah.
So do we wanna keep this at 250 um and 350? Again, there might be some variations in here, but at least, at least we're giving him a, what I would call a ballpark number to deal with.
Yeah, I think that's.
I think it's good.
Okay. Um, I like everything we have in here, and then, you know, some, some, it's giving him some ideas of what to play with.
Would you do a, like a playground in there also? I don't know.
I don't know that Jimmy might, I mean, that's something that could be discussed. He can come back with some options, but uh, he's got some playground kind of things in, of the different villages. I don't know if you want a playground right in the middle of town, but it might not be a bad idea. But he also talked about um, at the school, there would be some recreational space.
And I will say also to that, like, one of the things you may wanna consider is looking at uh, greater than five acres dedicated for school. It could be as much as 10 acres if you want to include more play area, et cetera. That, that could be tight. We'd want them to work with the, the school district to understand that, but I think they've reserved five acres. That may be 10. And you could get some rec space, green space in there as well. I mean, I, and, yeah.
Oh, that sounds, I, I, yeah.
Or maybe just note, maybe, maybe.
You know, with playground, you know, a, a field where you can, you know, a family could play touch football.
Yeah, I, I like that, Thomas. I think you're right on um, in terms of adding, yeah, adding more.
Maybe it's a plus five acres. We don't want too much to go there. You wanna maintain your open space, right? Uh, but, yeah.
I, I could easily go 10 acres for school, you know, um, so, so how do, how would you word that?
You don't even maybe need the last sentence, maybe you just note that school area, school, area dedicated for school uh, should be 10 acres, so, something to that effect. Again, that.
Then we can add that as number eight.
Yeah, oh, there you go.
I'll work the words out later, but.
All right, 10 acres.
An acre is a good amount for us, for a school? I have no idea.
It, it's a rule of thumb. I think that we'd wanna work with, you know, get an understanding from Summit County and the school district. Hey, roughly, what is the area of a school? I'm not sure, but I think, just as I think about some of the school areas, I know, five acres with, you know, some parking, with some drop off, with some play fields. It, you can start to hit five acres pretty easily, so maybe it's five to 10. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure.
Well, the other thing is, what, what schools usually stay the same? You know, if the population now moves to, you know, if we get even 5,000 new homes um, in, not just in our area, and they're gonna avail themselves of this school, there will be a double sized addition. There will be twice as many teachers. There will be twice as many students.
Planning for the future, that's exactly right. It's a buffer area around the school. That's okay.
Exactly. It's a buffer area, no matter what. How, how are we losing if they put up another, you know, baseball diamond or something, or soccer field, you know? I don't see where we, we would lose on that.
I mean, okay, will, will 10 acres support a baseball diamond or a soccer field also on the school? I, I, I'm.
Yeah, it, it would.
Okay.
Five, five would be tight.
Yeah, okay. Maybe at least minute, yeah, at least, that's what I was gonna say, at least 10 acres minimum, right? Okay.
And we have to think to the future, if we're putting in, you know, not just our homes around here, but all the homes that may come in, and, and they wanna use the school with all, you know, great, that's terrific. Um, or, you know, let's, to, to an extent, anyway, but they may need to, there may need, be a need for another school after that, but uh, or at least we got something in here. I think that was a good catch, Thomas. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, 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 and Donna, um, okay, so go back to five. Are we okay on five?
Yeah.
So I think this was meant to um reduce, you know, in terms of how this, the approach here was just to negotiate parking standards so that we could get more folks involved in public trans, uh, transportation, and um, that we might have a reduction, you know, per our zoning requirement. So commercial has a certain number of parking requirements per X square feet of commercial, and we might want, we might reduce that if, the thought here is that we might reduce that if um, we had greater, a, a greater degree of public transportation or access. So we would negotiate with Nate, or we would negotiate the AMD down to uh, you know, maybe provide less um, in the town center, uh, parking spots, keep the parking spots out of there, but absolutely increase the public transportation. So that's kind of the essence of this.
And with the trails and with the uh, recommendations you guys have noted for uh, busing and alternative modes and potential uh, chairlift connectivity down to Deer Springs, Deer Waters, the town, I think that is a good idea to reduce the amount of parking. And you, we had kind of touched on it a little bit earlier on. Do you wanna mandate that a certain percent be either underground or podium parking, hidden behind, you know, maybe retail shops, fronting those streets um, in the town center, so that you don't get as much surface parking, as much runoff, as much asphalt?
Thomas, what is podium parking?
Just structured parking, I should say.
Okay.
Yeah. Garages.
Garages.
I, I think that you, I think that there, certainly for the condominiums and workforce housing in that area, I think that you would wanna um, provide them off-street, off-surface parking, to leave some of that parking available for those visitors to the town center who are actually in a car. I, I mean, maybe it's parking in the town center, a minimum of residential and commercial parking. A minimum of 50% should be either structured or garaged parking, or you can go as high as 75%. It really depends what you wanna see. If you want it more walkable, you wanna hide more parking.
Thomas, do you think we should go further in this number six and provide um, some guidance?
Underground?
Yeah, I would say underground or structured parking. If you think that that is something that you're committed to, I think it's uh, I think it commits to a good design for a town center to hide your parking out um, off the surface parking lot, so I'd recommend it. I'd go a minimum of 50 or 75% should be underground or structured parking. And certainly, he'll work through that and see what can be done.
What, what, what did you say, 50 to 75%?
Yes. Do you guys have an input, um, a, a particular recommend? But I get most of it.
Let's get some words down here, and then we can, we can, um, we can kind of further wordsmith the percentages. Minimum of 50 to 75% underground.
Of, of the town center area should be under, or should be underground or structured parking.
Ralph, why do we make it 60 to 75%? This way, if we tried to cut it down, we're still no less than 50.
That's perfect.
Okay, good suggestion. Okay, minimum of 60 to 75% of the town um.
Center. Parking.
Town center.
Parking should be underground or structured. And you could put a sentence after that. This includes, this is both residential and commercial. Yep.
All right.
Did I read that right?
Minimum six is on the town center should be underground.
Yes.
That looks good.
Do we need to make that a seven, or can we keep that under six?
I think it ties into number six.
Yeah, I think it's under six.
Okay, just to, I'll just leave a space here between the, between those two thoughts. Anything else we're missing on, on, on that piece, on the parking?
I think you've got it.
Okay, let's kind of finish. The last two's, the last two aren't very long here, thank God.
Okay. Sounds good. Number seven, that looks great. Um, I mean, already he has proposed, you know, the, the, the rail trail type. And he did say he would go a tunnel under the Jordanell Expressway, which I'm not exactly sure where that would, I think he said over there by Park's Edge.
I think that he, I forget who brought that up at the last meeting, but I think that it was a tunnel, but then it was, it wasn't it under Richardson Flat Road, given the increase in potential traffic? I thought it was under there to ensure easy accessibility to the town center.
So I brought up, you know, are there gonna be any tunnels under, you know, under the, the, you know, busy intersection roads like Richardson's Flat uh, coming out of the town center, and he said, oh, I'm gonna put one in to go under the Jordanell Expressway, is what he said. And he said, well, we'll look at putting one under, under Richardson's Flat. I mean, he, he wasn't too keen on it, but he said he would entertain it, but I, that's the second meeting I brought that up. So, you know, he still didn't have it, you know, anything on there. I mean, if we're gonna do, you know, I, I would like to see something under Richardson's Flat Road, um, and, you know, why not put it in now?
I think that's a fair request.
So how do you wanna phrase this, Donna, that would suit, satisfy the needs of, or give him some guidance?
Well, you could, you can maybe actually even include this under number seven.
I think I would, just to keep consistency, yeah.
Okay.
Because it, it does have to do with localized and safe pedestrian and biking traffic. So we, you know, um, including, you know, or to maintain, I was gonna say, including uh, a, a tunnel for the, I don't know, what did he call it on that map? Was it, is it the rail trail?
Yes. The rail tale, rail trail where crosses Richardson Flats. It's down near the big parking lot.
Right, we suggest an underground tunnel um, near the town center. Where, where the, now, hold on a second, where the rail trail goes under that, so the rail trail would go underneath Richardson's Flats to avoid any, you know, or to, to ensure the safety of pedestrian and bike traffic.
For the rail trail, or where the rail trail?
But maybe where the rail trail crosses Richardson Flat Road.
That's good, yeah.
Right now, it's at surface.
To.
To main, to ensure
Safe.
Safe pedestrian and bike traffic.
Simple as that, Richardson?
Yeah. I kinda like, I like your abbreviation, RFR.
I don't type as fast as I used to, trust me, I think.
I think you're great. You're better than I am.
Okay, we okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Is there anything else we need to, we'd like to add here, so to speak? Before we get to maybe the wording of the resolution? Thomas, anything where, high level, we're kind of missing here?
No, I, I think you guys have outlined the concerns that you've expressed tonight well in this, in this report, so I, I think you've covered it, and I do think that requesting, you know, a couple of iterations from him is, is a smart move, just to get a better understanding of how to take this narrative, words, and put it into an actual plan design. So I, I think that that is I think you've covered it. I think it's smart.
Just to keep the word, the wordsmithing, um, you know, uh, consistent.
And maybe say to plan for future growth.
Yeah. We're not gonna ensure anything.
Okay, it's important to stay prime.
Kind of in it, sorry, it kind of, it kind of mo, um, falls over into the next page.
All right. Can I recommend that instead of you calling this a resolution, you call it a recommendation?
Whatever meets the, you know, the legal requirement, so to speak, so I can does that make, does that, and Polly, this is, this is your, this, if, if anything needs to be wordsmithed here, this is probably your domain, you know?
No, I think, you know, this reflects, if everyone is in agreement, it's a reflection of the planning commission's, um, thoughts and intent.
And I think then the first sentence, it is important to state as this preamble to this recommendation.
Thank you.
I think that's a pretty fancy way of that next sentence of saying what I had said. Which is.
The word resolution be, should be changed to recommendation.
Yeah.
The. This includes approach that was taken by Hydeout, which an approach that, whether that approach met the standards of transparency. That the planning commission, other entities and individuals expected in this process.
Sorry, I didn't know how, how, you know, that's the way I felt when I wrote it. So it's more, it's a feeling statement, if anything. If there's a better way to express this, um, Polly, be, be, but it's got to express our feelings here.
Yeah.
I think the rest is good, Ralph, in my opinion.
Was there, now at the end there, did you say some of municipal services? Just make sure we have that included in there. Um.
Well, the last part is what we, you know, what I just tried to identify what. Uh, you know, what I certainly thought were some of the benefits. The first part is. It really just says, if everything above. Including, you know, services, which we identified in one of the earlier core conditions are agreed to. So everything above. Um, call it, uh, one through five and one through. Not eight are met. That's what that's supposed to mean. If they're, if they're agreed to by the developer. Then, uh, the planning commission. Believes, resolves, maybe that's the wrong word now that we removed resolution. It's not really a recommendation, but. Resolves is a little bit lighter of a word than resolution, which is a noun, so to speak, you know? So what do you think, Polly?
Maybe understands.
Or determines.
Determines.
Determines that now, understand.
You see what we're talking about?
Yeah, right, resolves.
Concludes.
He leaves. Concludes, yeah.
Concludes is good.
I like. I think toward the top three, we, um, we need to put in there that, you know, we will, I mean, because this is also part of it. I mean, commercial is huge. You know, I just thought about safety, the EPA, but, um. But also the municipal services. I did not see that, you know, uh, we want to make sure that that's included, that, you know, we're going to have a police, you know, we would like to see a police station there. And I think that's great. I mean, with, you know, such a high residential area, high density all around. You know.
Yep. Donna, the only problem with that is, fine, you're gonna put a police station there and it's gonna be part of the town of Hydeout, but the town of Hydeout does not have a police force.
Right.
Well, it may, or it may, you know, if we contract with the county or someone else, then. You might have those type of facilities. Maybe you.
Well, could we put improved public services? Expected, I mean, you know, improve public, uh.
Right.
Services, which might include.
Which may include.
Police, fire.
Police, fire, you know, yeah, even the assisted living. You know, is, is, um, community service. You know? I mean, what if there was, I mean, although post office are kind of, I mean, it'd be great to have a post office there, but you know, I don't know. How that would.
They're, they're going the way the dodo bird done. I'm not sure.
Going away.
I hate to say that. I'm not sure we want to have any.
I, I know, I know.
They can't, they, they can't survive as they are currently. Um, that's maybe the last thing we want.
I know.
Ralph, is that, is that maybe improved public services and facilities, maybe?
Yeah.
Yep.
Point, yeah.
I mean, maybe a library might go in there. Who knows? I mean.
Didn't, didn't, wasn't there mention of a senior center or something like that?
This is the living senior center. That could be senior.
Community center, yeah.
Community center.
I like that better than just. I mean, we're, we're just offering some, you know, possible ways, possible thoughts to why this is. A benefit to this, to us and the surrounding community. Well, thank God, there's no more words to, to wordsmith here. It is, it is 9:23. Could, what's, what's the next suggestion, Polly? Should we have a, a motion to offer a motion that? Uh, to, to forward this on to the town council by tomorrow?
Yep. So I think the motion would be to forward this, I don't know how you titled it. I can't get to the, this recommendation. To the city, to the town council. To the town council. As outlined.
Okay, would anybody offer, first of all, is there any more discussion on this? I'll, I'll ask you, Donna, any last thoughts?
I mean, I, I don't know if it's, is it our place, uh, that one sentence that says about the transparency and integrity? That the planning commission, other entities and individuals expected in this process. Is that convey? Does that convey my, my thoughts in the beginning of this conversation? About them, about us. You know, receiving input from other entities. Or surrounding.
I don't think that should pertain to any of this, Donna. You know, we're supposed to look at this. As a planning commission for the town.
Okay.
And what we wanted it and not worry about. Outside entities and what they want.
I, I think, well, go ahead. Um, if anyone else has, you know, I mean, I think we've kind of like. Said a few things. I think this all gets forwarded, forwarded on. And I think we've also said, um, you know, that, uh. You know, in general, we find merit, but we've got this big issue here. I don't know how else we, you know, I'm not sure we want to make that the center point of our document. So it's for our, our recommendation, just to, you know, at least we mentioned it right up front. Um, and that we, we have concerns and we all have opinions. And when it's just not expressed, we can't express all of that here. But, you know.
Okay. And, and, and that's fine. I just. Put it out there.
Yeah.
Did you want to, how did you want to title this? It says subject up top. Did you want to put a, a different title on that? On this document, maybe, um.
Well, this is the subject, the, you know, this is actually, the subject was, um, is, is this sentence because that is in our agenda? So this pertains to the agenda item. Um, that's the subject. And then. Uh, and then this, these are all our comments, conditions, considerations. And then finally, our recommendation. So that's how I thought the flow was going. But again, Polly, if we're not following, you know, the best procedure, because I haven't written a lot of annexation stuff, so. You're probably hearing, you, you guys, you and Thomas are in the position to guide us here.
I, I think that that, what, what you say makes sense and, um, can be easily digested by the council. I don't know. Thomas, do you have any?
No, I agree. I think that, I think that's clear.
I mean, we're not just sending the recommendation. This all gets forwarded. And that's the way it has to be, because we're alluding in, we're, we're referring in the recommendation that you must meet. These core considerations and, uh.
Right. And I've also, you know, I note that there are council members who are listening in as well. So they've heard the discussion and come report back. To, to the council as well.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other, um, last comments, Tony?
No, I'm good with it.
Bruce?
Uh, the only thing, Ralph, is, uh, when you change the numbers on the densities. Uh, you'll have to go back and change the percent change.
Oh, that, no, you're absolutely right.
That's the only, uh.
Okay, anybody want to do some quick calculations? This stays the same. This stays the same. This stays the same.
No.
Oh, the second.
Doesn't. Second one?
Not minus 100.
Oh, that's right, 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 right. Okay. I will, I got my, I got my, um, calculator here with, uh.
I'll take the first one.
All right. I'll tell you what, you guys, you guys give me the numbers and I'll fill it in.
So the second one down is minus 73%.
Yeah.
First one stays the same, 57%.
That's a plus 100% there. And condos go 194.
That's pretty close, but it's a number on.
59%.
59%. The other one's 44%. Minus.
I think the bottom one is, the last, the total is 52%. Right, Bruce, or anybody check?
That's correct.
And this stays the same. This stays the same. Okay.
That highlighting can come out. That's dumb.
Uh, how did, let's see, how did I?
Maybe able to. And then the very second to bottom, no color.
That's what I did, but it's not, uh, it's not removing the color on this. Let's see.
Ralph, maybe go across from where you are to the right, about four icons to that paint bucket that is white, maybe, to the right, a little bit, right there, maybe? I don't know.
Yep. No, that's not doing it either. Let's try this. That would fill in, I think that would fill in the entire cell, um, of the table. But yes, see what I'm running into. Um, can we live with the color on this?
Yeah.
I think it's fine.
I don't, I don't, right, right at the, right at this point of the evening, I don't want to spend 15 minutes on removing the color, so. Good points. We'll, we'll fix it later. Let, let the council fix that one, does that.
Uh, Ralph, the only other. Comment that I would make or something to look at that we kind of glossed over a little bit is on our core conditions. Uh, number three. We said big, no big box stores, allowing for one single space to be no greater than 25,000 square feet, I think. Uh, Nated said 24,000 square feet. That's, so that's fine. But then all other spaces must be less than 20,000 square feet. That's. That sounds kind of big. I, um, we didn't really talk about that.
Well, yeah, that's a good point. And, and I was thinking about that too, Bruce. Um, I don't know what the best wording is for that. Any other? Um, last thoughts on, on the wording for this? Do we want to go, do, do we want to vary that number down to, call it 10,000? I don't, what I didn't want to do is limit ourselves into. Um, you know, a situation where we couldn't, where they, where, where, where it couldn't be a couple of, you know, large, large col, stores, larger stores. Um, and, and, you know, that are more survivable, sustainable. And I'm not sure what's sustainable anymore, if it's small stores. Or large, you know, some, some, somewhat larger store.
Ralph, you could go maybe down to 10,000, you know, restaurants, a good sized restaurant is probably four to 6,000 square feet. That's probably on the larger end. So I think if you said 10, you're safe. Uh, could say 7,500 if you wanted to get a little bit more specific, but I do think directing that smaller is a good idea to ensure that it's, you know. Local shops. And I, you mentioned that later in the, in the sentence, in the paragraph. So I think getting that down near 75 to 10,000 is, 7,500 to 10,000 is probably good.
Yeah. I, my big issue was the sustainability, back to the last conversation. Um, you know, with the change in the retail environment worldwide, I'm not sure what is sustainable. And sometimes you may have to vary this up a little bit and be more flexible. So that's, that's where I was going, you know, give a little bit, give the commercial a little bit more flexibility. I'm okay with 10.
And I, I want to tell you, I just Googled it. Um, the average Trader Joe's is 12,000 square feet, just FYI. So. They range between eight and 15. Square feet, thousand square feet. So.
Well, then. We were thinking of the Trader Joe's in, uh, in our one big single space.
Right.
In my.
Well, and just to put it in perspective, I read in the park record this week that, uh, Smith's in Kimball Junction is 60,000 square feet.
That's right. That's where I read that, 60,000, right? So. Is, you know, again, um, yeah, we have to be careful that we don't want to engineer ourselves at a rest, at a retail sustainability. That's, that's, you know, so then you have nothing. There, you know, so we have to be careful in terms of over.
I just wanted to make sure we had enough square feet. And obviously for 25,000 square feet, we have enough for at least the Trader Joe's, so.
Yeah, exactly.
If the Joe's would want to come here, you know?
Well, let's all, let's, you know, if this ever comes to pass, let's all get on the bad. I think there's probably 90% of us want a Trader Joe's or. Okay.
Those were my only comments, Ralph.
Thanks, Bruce. So I think we're at the end of our comments. It's got everybody's input. Does someone want to make a motion? To move this on to the town council?
I'll make the motion to move it to the town council, Ralph.
Thank you, Tony.
And I'll.
Do we have a second? Donna seconds it. Let's take a, a vote. Uh, Bruce?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So motion carries. Donna, we got through this. Donna, we got through this.
I'm forwarding a recommendation to the council.
Uh, Polly, do you want this, uh, this last copy that I have?
Yes, please, please send it to me and Thomas and Alicia and Kathleen, since you're...
Uh, Ralph, could you send me a copy of the last one? Because all I have on my phone is the original one that has none of the edits on it.
Yep, I'll tell you what, I'll just resend it to all the previous recipients and make sure we're on, on marker. But, I'll do that, I'll do that as soon as the, we conclude this, uh, um, does that make sense?
Yep.
I have to, I have to go into another email to send this out, you know, the hideout email. And Polly, if I miss anyone, just, just get back to me and say, you missed so and so, how's that?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, given that, um, we're now at nine thirty-seven, does anyone, unless anyone wants to continue any discussion, does anyone make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Oh, I'll definitely make that motion, Ralph.
Okay, Tony's back on.
I'll second it.
Is that Bruce?
Yes.
Okay. Donna?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
I would just say, great, great job on this for, for everybody's participation, I mean that, thank you.
We appreciate you, Ralph.
And vice versa. Go, go have something to, go have a lunch before you go to bed, you know?
Hey, Ralph, Ralph, good luck on the town council, Ralph.
Good luck to yourself wherever you're driving, I must have rocks in my head. I'll talk to you later.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Bye, Thomas and Polly, take care.
Thank you.